My dad's favorite number, so we're gonna. We're gonna start the meeting. Could we start the recording, please?
Reggie Jackson, God.
Recording has started.
And we have to wait a couple of minutes, a couple seconds for Jerry and Fair TV.
Joe, how's Smith Richardson looking so far?
Yeah, I hit a bucket of balls on Friday. It was very disturbing. I'm not sure what I'll be doing.
Six is, uh, Fear TV is ready.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, I'd like to call to order our regular monthly meeting of the town of Fairfield RTM for Monday, April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. We will start with the roll call and Betsy Brown, our town clerk.
Ed Bateson. Melissa Longbow.
Here.
Marty Fury. Amy Ruggero.
Here.
Karen McCormick.
Here.
Andy Perrin.
Present.
Al Schwartz. Jeff Steele.
Uh, here.
Alex Durrell.
Here.
Jeff Galdenzy. Tom Lambert.
Here.
Sharon Pistilli.
Here.
Laura Carson.
Here.
Alice Kelly.
Here.
R.C. Spolier.
Here.
Liz Zesma.
Here.
Will Diaz.
Here.
Ash Garskoff.
Here.
Joe Seibert.
Here.
Jay Wolk.
Here.
Steve Barrett.
Here.
Hannah Gale.
Here.
Andy Grisaffa.
Here.
Lisa Havy.
Here.
John Keown. Mark McDermott.
Here.
Jill Vergara. Karen Whackerman.
Here.
McFerrance.
I'm here.
Pamela Iacona.
Here.
Christine Messina.
Here.
Peter Tolman. Christine Brown.
Here.
Who Georgiatis.
Here.
Margaret Horton.
Here.
Billy Cento. Ken Astorita.
Here.
Peter Britton.
Here.
Frank Patisse.
Here.
Story Tolman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Okay, we're gonna have the pledge next, and after the pledge, I'd like to hold a moment of silence for uh, the Capabo family and the loss of their son Charlie yesterday after his long, long fight against cancer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Let's go to item number two to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular monthly meeting held on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll approve, Durrell.
Alright, so I had to switch the front page because the second page, nobody was doing anything. Durrell and a second by Alice Kelly. Thank you. Any comments or changes that anybody wants to make? All right, seeing none, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Alright, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, um. Betsy, we have three items on the consent calendar tonight, items five, six, and seven. Number five is the Commerce Drive, two hundred thousand dollar Metro Cog. Number six is the hundred and twenty thousand WPCA Fund Balance for Microgrid Project. And number seven is the five hundred forty, five hundred forty thousand uh, from WP- PCA Fund for Compost Agitator. And I have a motion to approve Representative Wolk, seconded by Representative Ferrance. Is there any further discussion on these items? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, those three items carry. Thank you. Okay, um. So the next items, three, four, and eight. We will have a public comment after the body comments, so we'll start with number three. To consider and act upon the following resolution recommended by the First Selectwoman, resolve that a certain contract negotiated by and between the Town of Fairfield and Fairfield Public Health Nurses, Unit Thirty-four of the AFT Nurses and Health Professionals, AFT, AFL-CIO, concerning conditions of employment for a period commencing July one, two thousand twenty, and ending July thirty, two thousand twenty-four, be and hereby is ratified. Do I have a motion to approve? Representative Vergara, filed by Representative Gale. Okay, I will open the floor to questions from the body. The body, put your name in the chat if you have any questions or comments. And we will, I will call on you accordingly. Representative Vergara.
Thank you, Jill Vergara for District Seven. I'm going to be supporting this contract, but I did have a couple of comments to make. Several people reached out to me from the Nurses Union, and I was very disappointed to hear that many felt um, not respected in town and undervalued, and I just wanted to make a comment and say very assuredly that I really value all the nurses. My kids have been in public school for um, almost a decade now, and I see nurses as being an essential piece to the health and safety of my children. And um, I very much value you. I, I wanted to read a couple of things from um, some of the e-mails that I received. Uh, the past two years have been very difficult for us. We have worn many hats. We have been on the front lines as a school nurse. We have served as your contact tracers. We have given countless vaccinations. We have delivered masks and gloves to the elderly. We have been screamed at by angry parents um, when taking them out for quarantine of school, for school and sports. Our days were long, leaving school at five or six sometimes in order to complete the contact tracing needed for the schools to remain open the following day. Our weekends were the same. The Town of Fairfield fails to recognize us. We are a small group of approximately twenty-five to thirty women that were responsible for keeping twenty-five schools open during the COVID pandemic. The town does not recognize our value in the community. I think that we do. We do. I want to say that I, I value you deeply. So many statements like this. Another one. The nurses have been frontline workers throughout this pandemic, assisting with keeping the schools open, managing a constantly changing environment in the schools' community according to frequent changes in guidance by the CDC and the laws of the state of Connecticut. We were teaching students, staff, and parents how to reduce risk in the schools, partner in contact tracing, as well as manage COVID cases presented to us in the schools. Like first responders, we worked evenings and weekends and holidays as needed to manage COVID cases as they spiked in our community. Nurses were on the front line of the vaccination clinics and literally gave thousands of vaccines to the community, first responders and school systems, starting December twenty-third, two thousand twenty. The respect given to the nurses by the town and human resources has been shocking in its lack of appreciation, support, and responsiveness to our needs and requests. The Nurses Unit has remained a unit, continued to serve the community, and FPS despite all this. Thanks. I support the nurses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Any other comments from the body? Representative Zesma?
Mr. Moderator, Liz Zesma, District Four. I just want to um, echo and join Jill in her comments in support of the nurses. My mother is a retired school nurse, and um, she also was the president of her union. And we've actually had discussions about these contracts, and so I just want to say to the nurses, um, we totally support you, are very thankful for what you do, especially what you did during the pandemic, and um, we are very fortunate to have you.
Thank you, Representative Zesma. Are there any other comments? Uh, thank you, Representative Spolier. I, I see the hand raised, and I also had someone else that emailed me directly, so. Any other comments for the, from the body before I go to the public? Okay, um, I'm gonna go to the public now. Patty Erickson, I see you here in front of me, so you had emailed me. Um, you can turn your mic on and introduce yourself. Um, you have two minutes.
Erickson, I'm the Secretary Treasurer for the AFT, our union. Um, I'm just gonna read a little statement. School nurses have given our all over the past twenty-four-plus months to help keep our students, their families, and our staff safe. In addition to managing our daily student visits and juggling the multitude of screenings, testing, and reporting that have resulted from the pandemic, we have worked endless days, nights, weekends, and holidays to contact trace close contacts of positive students and school staff. We have taken on additional full-time jobs as a Health Department contact tracers. We have instructed entire school buildings, staff, and students on following the frequently changing state regulations. Throughout the pandemic, school nurses have been on the front line of COVID. We have been questioned, doubted, harassed, intimidated, and bullied by parents. This school year by far has been the most difficult because simple safety precautions like universal masking have become politicized. Caring for others by asking to protect our most vulnerable has become a flashpoint that has been misinterpreted as a violation of personal freedom. The divisive environment has invaded school nurses' offices and left a deep wound that remains open and raw. If you engage with a school nurse, please be kind. Please show your appreciation tonight for our sacrifices over the past two years and vote yes for this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you very much. Alright, I lost the other hand. It was Barb. Barb Sirveness. Did you want to say something? Turn on your mic. Alright, in the meantime, is there any other public comment? Alright, I'm gonna assume, Barb, I see you here. I'm gonna assume either your mic is not working, or or you've decided not to make a comment. I'm gonna come back to the body. Are there any other comments from the body or questions? Uh, Representative Pistilli?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sharon Pistilli, District Three. Um, I just wanted to echo my colleague's support um, for the nurses and um, you know, we do really need to recognize what a difficult couple of years has been on everyone, but nurses wear so many hats, like at school, they really act, you know, not only as protecting the health of our children, but in many ways are the eyes and ears of, you know, mental health issues and social work issues. Um, and what's been asked of them is far more than anyone ever anticipated. No one ever, ever could have guessed what these last two years were going to bring us. And the nurses are also the first to raise their hands when they needed volunteers, like to back, for the vaccination clinics, like to get us all, you know, back to a safe spot as quickly as possible. And, you know, I'm very discouraged to hear that the nurses have been the brunt of some of the parental frustration. We really are all in this together, and the nurses have been, you know, a guiding light through the entire pandemic, so um, I'm sure I speak on behalf of the community when we say, you know, thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you, Representative Pistilli. Representative Iacono?
Uh, Representative Iacono, District Eight, Minority Leader for the RTM Caucus. And I would just like to, on behalf of our entire caucus, express our appreciation for our school nurses and let you know that we fully support your contract this evening.
Thank you, Representative Iacono. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Alright, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up is item number four, to consider and act upon the following resolution by the First Selectwoman, resolve that a certain agreement negotiated by and between the Town of Fairfield and the Professional and Technical Employees Association, Local thirteen oh three dash three six six of Council Four, AFSCME, AFL dash CIO, concerning conditions of employment for the period commencing July one, two thousand twenty, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, be and hereby is ratified. Can I have a motion to approve? Representative Ferrance, seconded by Representative Georgiatis. I will open the floor to comments by the body. Put your name in the chat, please, if you would like to speak or ask a question. Representative Vergara.
Hi, I'm Jill Vergara for District Seven. I'm not sure who this is, a question for maybe Jim, Mr. Hazelcamp, or um, is Mr. Baldwin on the line? Well, it's whether or not there is a hard and fast deadline for approving this contract.
There's statutory timelines to approve the contract.
So what is that timeline, Mr. Hazelcamp?
Uh, I think Attorney George has the date, if I remember right.
Correct. So um, the written agreement uh, of April five was submitted on April five for the body's consideration. Um, there's a fourteen-day period from the date that that is sort of the written agreement is reached um, to consider that, and then thirty days from that date, so I believe the deadline would be May nineteenth.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Questions from anyone else in the body? Comments? Representative Vergara?
Hi, Jill Vergara for District Seven. Uh, Mr. Hazelcamp, I appreciate the memos that you provided us with. Um, they did give me a lot of the information that I was looking for, but in the redlined version of the contract, it, um, I still couldn't make out the appendices, which have, contain a lot of important information. Even if this uh, contract is approved tonight, um, is it possible to see a non-redlined version of the contract with all those details in the appendices?
Yeah, I just saw we're on the same page. Are you talking about the wage grids?
Yes.
They are actually attached.
Oh, okay. I couldn't, I guess it was hard to read with the red lines.
No, I gave you uh, clean ones in the back.
Oh, in this recent submission?
Yeah, if you go to, oh, wait a minute, maybe that's the nurses, I'm sorry. Hold on one second. I want paper, let me see. No, I'm sorry, that was the nurses. Yeah, I mean, is there a problem giving you cleaned up appendixes? No, I mean, you can, it's the appendix are just rolled up by the general wage increases that you're gonna approve if you approve the contract, so.
Okay, I'd really like to see it, just to have the full documents, uh, and just going forward to have the expectation that we're, that we're given a copy, that we could read those, all, all the attachments in, in these kinds of contracts, so that we can make sure that we're knowledgeable and, and know all the details. Thanks.
Thank you, Representative Vergara. Representative Pistilli?
Sharon Pistilli, District Three. Um, Mr. Moderator threw you to Mr. Hazelcamp. I, I just have a comment echoing Representative Vergara's um, sentiments in that, you know, when we receive these contracts, we want to be able to, you know, have them with, in, in illegible format. I mean, I do have a considerable amount of experience reading um, employment contracts in general and found this very difficult to follow. So if we can have the information earlier and in a cleaner format, I think that would be really helpful for our review.
Thank you, Representative Pistilli. Any other comments from the body? Questions? Any questions from the public? Comments? Alright. Back to the body for last call. Not seeing any, so uh, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Is that two opposed? Representative Vergara, Representative Wolk? Anybody else opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion carries, what's that, thirty-four-two, Betsy?
Thirty-four-two.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number eight. Uh, to consider and act upon a sense of the body resolution regarding racism as a public health crisis, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alright, who said that? Who said so moved?
That was me, Mr. Moderator, Tom Lambert, District Three.
Thank you, Tom, seconded by Representative Carson. Alright, I will open up the floor to discussion here. Uh, Representative Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Margaret Horton, District Nine. I wanted to just take a moment to um, voice my support of this resolution. First, I just want to express how grateful I am to the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force members for doing the work of exploring and documenting how racism has been embedded in and impacted our community. Um, I'm not gonna spend time trying to convince anyone that racism is in fact a public health crisis. I believe that's a fact. That's well documented and backed by an extensive body of peer-reviewed literature, including that of the CDC, the Harvard School of Public Health, the American Public Health Association, and beyond there. Instead, I just want to take a minute to express why I think we need to take action by passing this resolution. In my professional practice as a clinical social worker, I have expertise in DBT, which is something that we talked a lot about a few weeks ago in our budget discussions around mental health services in schools. One of the primary concepts in DBT is that of validation. And I spend a lot of time every day talking with people about how necessary validation is towards creating peace, both within ourselves and with others. Validation is more than simply seeing where another person is coming from, though that is certainly part of it. Validation is largely about seeking understanding about another person's lived experience, even when our own lived experiences may be vastly different. It's also about conveying to others that we honor that experience and that we know that it's only when we start with this acknowledgement that we can then move towards greater harmony and true peace with each other. While some may view this resolution as a performative act, I believe instead it is a simple yet powerful act of validation that we as a governing body can do to convey to all members of our community that they are seen, heard, and valued. This resolution causes no sacrifice to us, but goes a long way towards conveying to those in Fairfield who have been marginalized by racism, that we do in fact honor their lived experiences, and that we know acknowledging their experiences is an important first step that we can take as town leaders towards creating the type of beloved community in Fairfield where peace and justice are truly felt by all. I've been very encouraged by the numerous emails I've received from constituents in support of this resolution, which vastly outnumbered the one or two I received against it. This proves to me that our community understands the importance of taking this step and is asking for our leadership in doing so. I wholeheartedly believe it's our responsibility to pass this resolution in order to honor the commitment to justice that we made as a town when we convened the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force, and I hope my fellow members will join me in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Warden. Are there any other comments from the body on this item? Representative Steele?
Let me just unmute, sorry about that. Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, yeah, I, I'd like to make a few comments on the resolution. Uh, I think first of all, I, I think it's important for everyone in this call to understand some background on the resolution and how it came to us. And having been part of the RTM for most of the last seventeen years and moderator for, for three and a half years, um, it's a regular practice in the RTM when proposing a sense of the body resolution to have a representative of both the majority and minority parties and have them jointly sponsor it, and then to share it with the leaders of both parties well beforehand so the intent can be understood. The language can be reviewed, discussed, and potentially worked out jointly so that we can get a two-thirds support from the body. After all, it is, it is a sense of the body, not a sense of a party, and not a sense of a group of people. But that didn't happen here. Instead, the sponsors, who are part of the majority party, obtained a document from a Hartford-based nonprofit public policy advocacy group, Health Equity Solutions. Their template is online, and you can read it. And the proposed resolution was sent first to the First Selectwoman, Brenda Cupcheck, noting that this would be introduced to the RTM. In so doing, the sponsors even said, quote-unquote, "We expect we can enjoy broad bipartisan support and signal our solidarity." That sounds great in practice, but that's not exactly what happened. The minority party's leadership was never given a heads-up, and we were only informed of the resolution by the First Selectwoman herself. There was never any attempt by the sponsors or the majority party's leaders to reach out across the aisle to the minority party and work together to achieve bipartisan support on this, and that's unfortunate. So what we have before us all right now is a pro forma stock language from this Hartford firm that offered a template on its website to be copied and used verbatim by towns across the state. Yes, it was adopted by the state of Connecticut and twenty-two other municipalities out of a hundred and sixty-nine towns. But here, here in Fairfield, it has no input from anyone who lives in this town. It has not been adapted whatsoever to address the unique characteristics of our town and what has been done already. So in regards to the content of the resolution itself, I have five quick points to make. One, as written, the resolution focuses solely on race- One, as written, the resolution focuses solely on racism and excludes discrimination, bigotry, and prejudice against people of many other identities and backgrounds besides race, such as different ethnicities, religions, genders, sexual orientation, disabilities, and that's just to name a few. In fact, the resolution itself presented doesn't even, it doesn't even condemn racism, antisemitism, discrimination, and bigotry. The second point, the resolution presented does not declaratively state that Fairfield intends to be a welcoming, inclusive, tolerant, and supportive community to all who live here. Point number three, it can also be even construed that the resolution is overly broad and unfairly stigmatizes the entire town and its residents as racist. And I don't think that's what we really are trying to do here. The fourth, the resolution presented ignores other urgent, emergency-level public health crises which can impact anyone in our community at any, at any time, like mental illness, teen depression, substance abuse, fentanyl and opioid addiction, and violent crime. Each of these have killed people. Those are indisputably public health crises that do not discriminate. They can affect all people regardless of background, and we should acknowledge them. Fifth and lastly, the resolution presented does not recognize the work that the town of Fairfield has already done and continues to do so regarding elimination of racism and its effects. This is in Town Hall, within the police department, the school system, and in the community with the establishment of the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force, which was the first one established in the state. We as a town are indeed taking a position and opening up meaningful dialogue on racism. Our town is not ignoring the issue. We are not marginalizing it. We are not silencing those who are struggling. Because of this, I would support a resolution that is stronger, more meaningful, more inclusive, more encompassing of other additional urgent public health problems we are facing and which are threatening the lives of citizens of all backgrounds. And hopefully one that can be supported in a bipartisan fashion. A resolution that says, "We do understand all of the challenges in front of us" and that "we intend to continue addressing them", that "we are a town that welcomes all people", because that is what Fairfield is about. So to support a better, stronger, more powerful bipartisan statement, one written by Fairfield residents, I make a motion to strike and replace the current resolution with a substitute amendment that, uh, that I have just emailed to all of you and which I will share on my screen, and, Mr. Moderator, I will read aloud for the record. If that's okay.
Yeah, you can, uh, share it on the screen, um.
Make sure I do it the right way here.
Everybody's gonna have to open it up themselves right now.
Yep. Just give me a second. Yeah, you can open it up yourselves, and I want to make sure I have opening the right screen here. Bear with me. Bear with me. Do you see it or not?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if you can make it any larger for folks.
Yep, I will try to do that. Bear with me one more second, please. It shouldn't take me, it'll take me just over four minutes to read this for those of you who think I'm going to drone on and on. So I'll read this out loud. "This is a resolution promoting equality, tolerance, and anti-discrimination in the town of Fairfield. Whereas the Fairfield RTM wholeheartedly condemns racism, antisemitism, discrimination, and bigotry, wherever, whenever, and wherever occurs. Whereas Fairfield residents have experienced racism, antisemitism, discrimination, and/or bigotry. Whereas Fairfield residents of all identities face many public health challenges, including mental illness, teen depression, substance abuse, and violent crime. Whereas the pandemic has had an unprecedented and far-reaching impact on the mental health of our residents, further exacerbating struggles that existed long before COVID. Whereas there is no place for discrimination of any kind, including for reasons of race, color, ethnicity, national origin, gender, sexual preference, disability, religious or political beliefs in our town, all residents should have equitable access to opportunity. Whereas the town of Fairfield has made a commitment to be a welcoming, inclusive, tolerant, and supportive community to all, taking a position of encouraging diversity of thoughts and ideas and meaningful dialogue between and input from its residents, town government, police, and the school system, and constantly seeking to improve the quality of life for all who live here. Whereas in 2020, the Ford, the Fairfield Board of Selectmen, the first in the state, proactively established a Racial Equity and Justice Task Force to identify any racial and ethnic inequalities and just, and injustices within town governance and operations, and to provide the BOS with proposals to effectively address and eliminate them. Whereas the town boards approved funding through ARPA for seventy-five thousand dollars for a DNI consultant to create an affirmative action plan, review the blueprint provided by the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force, and provide recommendations. Whereas the Board of Selectmen proposed a diversity recruitment coordinator in the FY twenty-three budget to expand the town's hiring practices and update the affirmative action plan once developed. Whereas the first step to call and ask for help should be the most difficult step in working through any crisis, a full-time social services director will allow for planning and reviewing processes and procedures to streamline how services are provided in an efficient, compassionate, and respectful way. Whereas three hundred thousand dollars were designated in ARPA funds to assist local nonprofits that provide mental health services to residents. Whereas the Board of Education hired a DEI program director to provide leadership fostering the academic and social emotional growth of all students through the promotion of a culture of community, tolerance, diversity, and inclusion, and support students and staff to address, address issues and opportunities that impact student learning. Whereas trust between law enforcement agencies and the people they protect and serve is essential in a functioning democracy. The Fairfield Police Department has established a community outreach team and has fully embraced and implemented community policing best practices and policies as recommended by President Obama's task force on Twenty-First Century Policing. Whereas the Fairfield Police Department has officially established the Fairfield Police Behavioral Health Network in partnership with the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, Greater Bridgeport Community Mental Health Center, Child and Family Guidance Center, Mobile Crisis Intervention Services, Operation Hope, and Fairfield Senior Social Services to discuss trending issues, current best practices, available joint training opportunities, debriefings on shared investigations, and to continually evaluate how they can better serve their communities and each other when responding to incidents involving behavioral, mental health. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the RTM of Fairfield fully supports efforts and initiatives to combat racism, antisemitism, discrimination, and bigotry in all its forms in town government, the public school system, and the broader community. Two, we'll consider equality and inclusion in any newer existing ordinances, committees, and commissions approved by the RTM. Three, we'll support initiatives in the Human Resources Department to expand diversity recruitment and policies in town government. Four, we'll continue coordinated efforts through the town to remove the stigma and challenges of accessing mental health services by providing funding and collaborating with town departments so individuals and families can access mental health services without regard for their ability to pay. Five, further work to solidify alliances and partnerships with other organizations that are confronting racism and encourage other local, state, regional, and national entities. Six, and finally, we'll promote continued engagement on issues involving racism, antisemitism, discrimination, and bigotry among all town departments and service providers to get their support and input on current processes and procedures and new initiatives to address any issues as they arise. So I appreciate your listening. I appreciate your patience, and, um, that's all I got right now. I'm going to stop, Sharon.
Thank you, Representative Steele.
Do it.
Okay, um.
I think the next step is a second.
Yeah, well.
This is Ken Astorita from District Ten. I'll second that motion.
Okay, second. The Majority Leader would like to call a caucus, ten-minute caucus.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
So we will, obviously, uh, the minority caucus can do as they please, but we'll have to go offline to another method of, uh, communication.
Do we know how we're going to do that?
Well, I plan on staying connected, but we're going to go offline to another, uh, uh, Zoom or whatever we're going to use, so. I don't, I don't know what you guys use to caucus, but.
You're right. I guess we'll figure it out. Um, okay.
I would mute yourselves and turn off your cameras.
Yep.
And, uh, let's be back at, um, let's give it, uh, eight fifty-five. Motion on the table to discuss for Mr. Steele's presentation. Uh, just one question, is this from you directly or from your entire Republican caucus?
This is, this is a motion I made.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So the first person up, Representative Whackerman, you were going to let Representative Zezma go before you? Or was it Representative Pastili first?
Representative Whackerman said, uh, Zezma goes first.
I'm going to yield to, to Representative Pastili and then follow her.
Good, thank you. Representative Pastili?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I just, I wanted to make a comment that, um, I, I agree with the additional points that Mr. Steele has raised. Um, but, you know, this resolution before the body is not political and should not be controversial. And there's room for us to make resolutions about the content that he's, um, you know, talking about at another time. But, you know, specifically the focus of the Racial Equity Task Force, um, you know, their report was given to the Board of Selectmen in January. And so our objective is to address racism now and what we can do about it. And that's why we brought this resolution before you. And, you know, we didn't hear from anyone, like, last week when we brought this up about any amendments. So we have not had any time to consider that. And so let's, you know, focus specifically on racism as a public health crisis, which is what the resolution is all about. And if we want to address those other issues, they are, by all means, you know, have been the subject of, of other conversations. And let's work together on that down the road. But let's address racism first, because that's the objective. And, you know, we're standing behind the work of the Racial Equity Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Pastili. Representative Zezma?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Liz Zezma, District Four. I just wanted to, and thank you, Jeff, for, for your, your work that you've obviously done on, on your amendment. I just wanted to clarify for the body, for the public, and for the record, which means, uh, the minutes of this meeting, exactly what steps were taken to engage my colleagues on the other side of the aisle. On March sixth, I wrote, um, uh, an email to represent, to, uh, First Select Woman Kupchak about the recommendations in the blueprint that the Racial Equity Justice Task Force, um, submitted in January to discuss those and the idea of a resolution. Now, of course, it's within her purview to do a proclamation. So my idea was to say, you know, here's what they're recommending. What can we do? How can we work together? This is what the RTM would like to do, but I'm bringing this to you as, you know, as the person who now is charged with some of those recommendations. And, um, the response came back to me with the following people on copy. It was, um, Jackie Berlone, Pam Iacono, Jeff Steele, Tom Bremer, and James Baldwin. So on March eighth, all of those members of the Republican caucus and others within the administration were fully aware of this dialogue. First Select Woman Kupchak replied and said that, um, frankly, she recognized that it's certainly within our purview to bring forward a resolution. Um, however, and I quote, "I don't know what real impact a resolution would have in creating change." And again, this was seen by everybody on copy that I just mentioned. My response back to her was that, given she explained time constraints during budget season, and that, of course, I thanked her for convening this task force. She is the one who put this, you know, in motion, uh, along with, you know, the input of others in the community. But she convened it September fourteenth of twenty-twenty. So I told her that after May second, which is when we are voting on the budget, that I would like to have a sit-down conversation. Um, so therefore, everybody has been aware of this resolution for, you know, a month and a half. Um, on April seventh, I reached out to the Minority Leader and asked if she could, you know, give me some sense of, of what sort of support there may be for the resolution. Um, and she replied that she would be caucusing with, with her caucus tonight, as we customarily do before a meeting. At no time did anyone who was privy to all of this reach out, ask to be involved, ask to be included, ask to offer amendments. Um, so I have kept everyone in the loop. And I just wanted to clarify for, for Mr. Steele in case he has, for Representative Steele, in case he has forgotten that he was very much on copy of this dialogue. My feeling about many of the excellent points that, that Representative Steele has made is we are turning this into an All Lives Matter moment. We absolutely should be honoring, discussing, and advancing the, the rights and equality of other groups. This was crafted in response to a very specific charge that a task force was given and the recommendations and blueprint they produced. This is the matter before us. This is the matter that we are taking up. And this is what I feel is important, as Representative Pastili said, is to deal with this matter first and to deal with it unapologetically, without fear and without defensiveness, that we are talking about racial equity and justice. And I yield time to other members of the caucus who wish to speak, but I just wanted to clear, clarify the record.
Thank you, Representative Zezma. Um. Let's see, did Representative Whackerman, I know you were in there earlier, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I think that, um, Representative Pastili said it well, but I, I do, I, I think those are great, noble things that you list, Jeff. And, um, I agree with my colleagues that that's something maybe we should be putting on our radar to talk about down the road. But our resolution is really in response to the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force, um, work that, that Brenda, you know, appointed, which was a Racial Equity and Justice Task Force. And I don't see how, um, approving that resolution in any way minimizes all of those other groups. It's just a way to acknowledge the issues that people of color have in the world and in our town. And it's not about people being racist. It's about just systemic racism and the genuine health issues that, um, arise from it as a result. So I hope that, uh, all of the members of the RTM will approve this resolution. And if Representative Steele would like to bring his resolution forth in the future, I think it's, it'd be great to talk about. But this really is very focused on purpose. And it's, um, it's really a tribute to the First Select Woman that she formed this task force and, and wanted that these issues to be addressed and acknowledged. And I think that we should do this. This is the first step in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Whackerman. Just going back, Representative Horton, you, you said you had questions at eight forty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think my questions themselves have been answered, but I could just echo that I, I think that the best way truly, again, what I was saying earlier, that we can honor the lived experiences of, you know, Black, Indigenous, people of color, community members, is by supporting the resolution as is. I know that Representative Steele made the point about it being, you know, quote-unquote boilerplate language. And that is because it's that language in particular is considered best practices by experts, you know, in the field on the issue. So I think that that is, it's important to, to have that. You know, again, the issues that Representative Steele brought up are incredibly important. As a social worker, they are near and dear to my heart. I think, though, in this resolution, they dilute the message around racism as a public health crisis. And so I, I think that we really need to focus on the resolution as written.
Thank you, Representative Horton. Representative Astorita.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ken Astorita, District Ten, and I appreciate some of the, the kind words for Mr. Steele and First Selectman Cupchik from my colleagues here. Obviously, this is, this is a very important issue. And so I'm not sure why this body would pass a resolution of this magnitude that was not written specifically for Fairfield. The amendment proposed by Representative Steele addresses the heart of the issue, racism and discrimination in all its forms. And it makes clear that those behaviors will not be tolerated in our town. And it states definitively that Fairfield is committed to being a welcoming, inclusive, and tolerant community for everyone. And it also makes clear what the town has done and will continue to do to address this issue. And isn't that what those who support this resolution want? Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Astorita. Representative Darrell, did you have a comment? Not sure what's in there.
No, it was a typo, Mr. McDermott. Sorry about that, as I retyped.
Okay, thank you. Representative Spolier.
Hi, Marcy Spolier, District Four. As one of the sponsors of this resolution, I cannot support the amendment at this time. I think there's some awesome and really great points in Mr. Steele's amendment. And I think that those are certainly things that we can address in a bipartisan fashion as we go on. But I think we need to act now on the current resolution before us. If resolution has been a work in process, process for over eighteen months, I would say twenty-one, twenty-two months, the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force was appointed by our First Selectmen well over eighteen months into, before they had an eighteen-months charge. And they worked on this and they came out with three recommendations. And this was essentially one of the recommendations, was to create a resolution that adjusts this. And this is best practice, this, this current resolution as it stands before you. And I don't think we can confuse it with adding other important things. But our focus at this moment needs to be on the fact that this is a public health crisis and we need to focus on this at this moment. So I will not support the resolution that Mr. Steele posted or proposed, but I would like to work on it in the future. Something like that. But I, I would like to keep the current resolution as I presented it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Spolier. Representative Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Lambert, District Three. I just want to echo the comments by Representative Spolier, Representative Pistilli, Representative Zesma, each of the caucus who spoke in thus far. I do want to add, though, that I would be happy to support a resolution consistent with the kind that Representative Steele is offering, especially after what I'm assuming are gonna be bipartisan-supported joint task force on those other issues, whether they be ethnicity, national origin, gender, sexual preference, disability, religious or political beliefs. I think that the town has a lot of work they can do on all those issues and look forward to joint task force being convened by the town and supported by members of both caucus to address each of the issues specific to those marginalized groups.
Thank you, Representative Lambert. Representative Diaz.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Will Diaz, District Five. Being one of the only minorities on this body, I thought it was probably important that I spoke about this issue. In my experience in this town, I've been here for twenty-two years. And I do want to acknowledge Representative Steele's. I, I think he makes some very valid points. I do. I love all that language. However, what's, what's happening here is a diversion from the, from the, from the issue that we want to actually bring forth, and that's racism specifically. And so if we're gonna do that, it takes, it takes focused energy. If we're, if we're focusing on all these other issues, where is the energy for, for, for dealing with racism? I'm on the receiving end of, of microaggressions on a daily basis in this town. I'll give you a quick story. I was calling the police to report that someone had stolen a bike from my garage. Police show up, park across the street, sit there in the car. I'm standing out in front of my house. He finally rolls down the window and says, "Is this your house?" Okay. That's called a microaggression. That's, that's not something that many of you will ever encounter based on the fact that you're not a person of color. So it happens to me in a library. It's happened to me in, in a bunch of different places. I go to therapy once a week. This is some of the stuff I talk about in therapy. Okay, so we're, we're talking mental health here, right? If we're concerned about mental health, let's deal with those of us who are actually struggling with this. So there's not gonna be any nuance, any, any focus on the nuance of racism if we're focusing on all these other issues. So we're burying racism under a bunch of other issues. Okay? I'm totally for addressing all those issues at a later time, but right now, this resolution, it's focused on racism. And I think that's where we need to go with it.
Thank you, Representative Diaz. Are there any other comments on Representative Steele's resolution? Representative Carson, I see your hand up, so go ahead.
I think Jay wanted to speak before me. Did you see that in the comment?
Thank you, Laura. I did.
You got it.
I appreciate it. You wanna go first and I'll go after? Go ahead.
I apologize.
No, go, Jay, go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I wasn't down far enough. I apologize.
No problem, no problem.
It's a lot of names in here. Go ahead. Sorry.
That's no problem. You're doing a good job tonight. Listen, on, 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 on Representative Steele's resolution, there are a lot of great points to it that he made. I, I'm, I'm in agreement with a lot what he said. I'm, I was gonna say this at the end, but I'm one that got a sense of the body done on this, on, on our, on our RTM with bipartisan support from the, from the Majority Leader at the time, from two representatives to Brenda Steele, Brenda Cup, our First Selectwoman, Brenda Cupchik. So I wish this was going a little easier than that. My thing is this task force was brought forth to us by, by our First Selectwoman. Why have a task force? If, if, if would you, why didn't we just do, why didn't they just put forth a resolution, not have a task force like I did with the Sense of the Body for GMO labeling? We didn't have a task force. We, 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 we agreed. We made a resolution. I presented it to the, my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, and, and we got it passed forty-five to five. That's when we were fifty. But anyway, I just, I just, you know, going back to what, what Representative Horton is saying, this is a health issue. You know, my God, we're, we're about to have the Holocaust remembrance in our town in the next few days. And don't you think that people who knew people who were, you know, part of the Holocaust is, is angst from, from racism? They, you know, I, I am. I mean, when I hear what happened during the Holocaust, it bothers me to this day. It bothers me to this day what happens to people of color, to what people do. It is horrible. It is, is a health crisis in our, in our, in our country. This, this task force, by the way, was put forth in our town, wasn't it? I mean, aren't, aren't we, you know, shouldn't we be supporting the task force that the First Selectwoman put together? And support that? I'm not, and I, I'm in agreement that maybe down the road, we can start putting some of Representative Steele's thoughts in what, what he said in, into this resolution. But right now, we need to pass what this task force put forth. And, and my God, it is a health crisis. I can't see anybody who doesn't see it in that way. It's just my opinion, but thanks for listening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Representative Volk. Representative Carson.
Hi, Laura Carson, District Four. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to say that this particular resolution came right out of the Justice Equity Task Force. And this has nothing to do with all these other issues that are great to look at. And there are particular remedies for some of those issues. Opioids, we have treatment programs, therapy. We don't have a treatment program for racism. And this racial justice, which was created by our First Selectwoman, did give us a charge to put this out there. And when we listen to someone like Will Diaz talk about the microaggressions every day, I don't know how we don't just say, of course, we're gonna support this. And you can't vote. Just by voting yes on this doesn't preclude us from going and doing the other work that you feel we need to do. But no one brought it up until tonight, dropped it in our lap, and I do, I can't help but think it's a way to not have to deal with this. And I'm telling you, it's, it is a public health crisis. We got so many emails. We all got those emails from like so many constituents and experts. Sarah Evans talked about the health impact on racism, structural racism that causes people of color to suffer traumas and mental health issues, poverty, and it perpetuates. And all we're asking is to take a first step by proclaiming it's a public health crisis. And it's not aimed at any one individual in our town. So I will be supporting this, our proclamation, but I can't support Jeff's tonight until we discuss that one another night. But it doesn't mean you can't vote yes on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Carson. Representative Steele.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I, I appreciate everyone's comments. You know, thank you for commenting on, on my motion. I do feel it is, is inclusive of so much, and that's the beauty of it, I think, is that it is inclusive. It doesn't address any one issue. In fact, it doesn't hide it. It incorporates it. We address it in this. And I think I, I, I talk about racism and how we should address it and get in front of it. I mean, I, I think that's clearly stated and written. And I think you all have kind of said here that you, you support the components of it, that no one is is opposed to what we've said. And here, racism is addressed. That's the beauty of it is. We do address it. We do address committing ourselves to, to taking this issue on. And we've done probably more than any town in Connecticut to address this. So I, I look at it as, we weren't really bipartisan from the beginning. I would hope we can be going forward. I hope this could be bipartisan. And it sounds like, sounds like something we, we all agree to, right? There, there's nothing in it that we don't agree on. So I, I don't intend to confuse or hide an issue. In fact, I keep it in there and, and bring other issues in, other issues that are impacting all types of people. And I think that's important that we stand behind many of these things, many of these public health crises and issues. So I thought this could be the most bipartisan way to bring us all together on something we support. We all support this. How do we not support what's written in here? So that's all I'll say, but I appreciate you listening to me. I appreciate you, you know, hearing this out. And, you know, we do have a task force in place and that's, that's working on this and it's providing recommendations. But our job in the RTM is not to look at any one specific issue, is, is to just, and the beauty of this is we can address multiple issues and important issues, equally important issues. Why can't we bring them all in and all agree together and be bipartisan here and support something that we know we all agree on? Thank you.
Representative Pistilli.
Sharon Pistilli, District Three. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Steele. With all due respect, we received this from you at eight thirty-five PM. So we didn't even receive the resolution in advance. We had committee meetings last week and nobody said anything about this. You were copied on emails before this and we never knew that you had amendments. If there were amendments that we were aware of ahead of time, then great. But if the point is that we're all equal and that we should be dealing with many issues, right now, the issue before us is racism is a public health crisis and we are not equal. That's the point. And we are addressing this by saying, we see you, people of color, we understand, and we are holding you up. And that's the point. And it is because of the work of the Racial Equity Task Force that we're here. If there are other task force on these other issues and they come before us or we choose to address them, then we can. But when the meeting starts at eight and we receive it, we receive an amendment, a sizable amendment, that's like three times the size of the original proclamation, thirty-five minutes into the meeting, it's not at a point where we can vote on it, unfortunately. And that doesn't mean agree or disagree, but we haven't heard anything. There was no discussion from the, for Republican Caucus, as best I could tell, and if they agreed or disagreed to anything that we said up until this point. So I'm urging everyone, please, you know, for the sake of our town and everyone who lives here, to vote in favor of the resolution as it was originally presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Pistilli. Representative Georgiadis.
I drew Georgiadis, District Nine. I'm going to vote against Mr. Steele's amendment today. I agree, there are a lot of important items in there. Mr. Steele says it includes everything. It does not include an addressing poverty. And I had this discussion with my own caucus as someone who was raised by a divorced, single mom that received no childcare. Twelve thousand a year she raised three girls on. We did not have health insurance. It was a public health crisis. And I wanted my caucus to take poverty into consideration. But I agree, if you talk about, so hopefully, when we come back to Mr. Steele's amendment, we can put in poverty because our seniors in this town struggle to pay for their prescriptions. Racism has contributed to poverty across this country, so that needs to be addressed. And I look forward to putting it into Mr. Steele's amendment and when we convene in a bipartisan way. But working with my caucus, I absolutely was convinced that racism has been, for a long time, hundreds of years, a public health crisis. It needs to be addressed now. I totally approve that it is a standard language. Sorry about that. I'm dog-sitting. And tonight is the night, we've been preparing for this for months. There's an ample opportunity to step across the aisle either way. And I hope that we can do this tonight. We can all support this amendment, our proclamation that racism is a public health crisis, and then come back and work again to make an additional proclamation. There is not a limited number of proclamations. There is no deadline to proclamations. So please, I'm asking all members of the RTM to support this proclamation that we worked with our Racial Equity Justice Task Force and that everyone on both sides of the aisle were aware of. I ask you very adamantly to support this tonight, and I look forward to working with all of you on the next proclamation that Mr. Steele will put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Georgiadis. Representative Carson, you have a comment. Representative Carson, you have a comment.
Hi, Laura Carson, District Four. Respectfully, Representative Steele, there is no racial justice equity task force now. They, they finished their charge in January, so there is none right now. And they gave a blueprint to Brenda, and there is no work being done as of, that we know of. So the work isn't being done yet. They just gave a blueprint of what all that they investigated to show you that there is systemic racism in Fairfield. And there are people that get microaggressions every day, but there is no work being done on it. The first step needs to be a proclamation, and that is why I'm asking all of you to please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Carson. Just to clarify, it's a resolution, not a proclamation. They're two different things, so. Proclamation would come from the first select woman.
Thank you for the correction. Sorry, I'm a little shaken, sorry.
That's okay. Shaken, not stirred. Representative Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To you, Representative Steele, you know, you mentioned that you thought that this would be appealing to the entire body because of how inclusive it is. And I, it, it's actually because it is so overly broad is why I am not going to be supporting the amendment, because I believe in it being overly broad. It actually dilutes the issue of racism and in doing so, actually invalidates the lived experiences of, you know, people in our community who we are trying to honor their experiences with this resolution. So it's because it's so overly broad that I don't think it's the appropriate amendment at this time.
Thank you, Representative Horton. Do I have any other comments? From the body? Representative Seibert, I see a hand up. I appreciate you putting it in the chat, please, you know better.
Sorry about that, Mr. Moderator, my bad.
That's okay. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Representative Seibert, District Five. Representative, to Representative Steele, I commend you for your very comprehensive amendment. I agree with the many things you have in there. Also, the additional suggestion from Representative DeGeorges about poverty, I think, is also well justified. I try to be as bipartisan as I possibly can, but I, I, I must support this proclamation and, and not support your amendment at this time. This is the way I look at it. This is Chapter One, what I think is four chapters in overall equality for the town of Fairfield, okay? And I think Chapter One is a priority and is very specific. Therefore, we must get this done and then work together, both parties, to work on your amendment and what other, other suggestions could be made on this amendment. So that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Seibert. Any other comments? From the body? Okay, turn it over to public comment. Are there any comments from the public? If you could write your name in the chat? I see your hand up, Mr. Manel, so we'll let, get you started.
Hi, it's Doug Bunnell. Thank, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to thank the whole RTM for a very thoughtful, thorough discussion of this. And just briefly, in regards to the, the amendment proposal, you know, I certainly agree with many of the comments about it being overly broad and inclusive to the point of diluting what I think is a necessary, necessary focus on racism. And most specifically, what's missing, glaringly missing from it is any clear statement about the existence of systemic or structural racism in Fairfield. And in my opinion, without that sort of statement, you know, any past resolution would be pretty ineffective and ineffectual. So I think it really must include that clear, unambiguous statement that this is a fact of life in Fairfield. There's no shame in it. I think there's actually honor in speaking up and acknowledging it. In regards to the original proposal, just Representative Steele and Esther Rida made some points about it being stigmatizing to residents. And really, I want to emphasize this, I did this on April 11th as well. This is not a statement about individuals in Fairfield being racist. This is a statement about there being structural, systemic, race, racial, racial, racist sort of impacts that happened at an unconscious level, a systemic level. They happen with or without the conscious intent of individuals. And at this point, if, if we keep coming back to that point about we're stigmatizing individuals in Fairfield and calling them racist, I feel personally, that's almost a deliberate misreading and this, this sort of understanding of the document. There's also a comment about how it had not been tailored to Fairfield. That's somewhat deliberate. I mean, this is a language and, you know, statements that we think have been road tested elsewhere, that they have credibility and so forth. So I don't think we need to tailor it so specifically to Fairfield. We're not that unique. But I do think this body has a unique opportunity to really call out these issues and lead Fairfield into a more equitable reality. So I'll stop there. And again, thank you all for your hard work on this. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bunnell. Rep, Representative Ryan Odenak, please.
Good evening. I also served on the racial equity and justice task force. And I wanted to emphasize again that whenever, during our process over a year and a half, whenever our conversations veered into the all lives matter in terms of making statements or whatever, it was, it was always brought back to the table, how important it was to keep what we were doing focused on racism. The, the task force was formed out of a very specific racial event. And the, the people of color that served on the task force always brought the group back to that and were constant reminders of the importance in this particular work that we were doing, that we keep it focused on racism. And the, as Doug said, acknowledging is a very important first step to this work. And, and again, you know, Fairfield is not a bubble. It exists in a world where systemic racism exists. And to say that, yes, we are part of that, we are not pointing fingers at any particular individual. And I think it's, to, as Doug said, to say that by passing a resolution somehow we are stigmatizing our town. Honestly, I think it's the opposite. I think we are holding our town up in a very incredibly brave way that sends a, a very strong signal about what our values are in the town. And I just want to encourage you all to support the resolution as it has been presented tonight without the, the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Odenak. Nancy Lefkowitz?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Nancy Lefkowitz, former co-chair of the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force, select woman and Fairfield resident. And really, I just wanted to go on record, I had shared my own point of view in a letter addressed to the body, to the RTM last week, but wanted to echo tonight for the record the comments of both Mr. Bunnell and Ms. Odenak and just, you know, to echo what they said that this, this declaration tonight is really about the acknowledgement that systemic racism exists and it is a public health issue. And that the next step perhaps is to address the nuance and the subtleties that are Fairfield, but that it is on purpose, boilerplate language, if you will, because it is meant to acknowledge something that Fairfield is not immune to. And I do also want to echo the comments of the representatives on the RTM who have acknowledged the, the work that Mr. Steele has done. Representative Steele, you make some excellent points. And those, absolutely, I would support any work and efforts being done to address many of the issues that, that you do talk about, but I think it is a situation of both and, not either or. But in light of the fact that we have to act now in order to validate the lived experiences as many of my colleagues on the RTM tonight, former colleagues, I will say, have addressed, I think it's imperative that it's passed as written and that the amendment language is something that should be taken up at a further date. And I also wanted to acknowledge and thank Representative Diaz for speaking so vulnerably and honestly about his lived experience and to say thank you, because that experience echoes much of what we did here throughout our tenure on the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force. And it's because of those experiences, because of the lived experiences of the one in five residents, non-white residents here, that we need to validate and say to them, to, to echo Representative Horton's point, that, you know, we see you, we value you, and we honor what you're saying. And, and as such, I do believe it's imperative to, to pass its, insubsequent on this body, to pass as written, not as amendment, as amended, not because that isn't language that you should all look at, and I hope you will. And again, I will do whatever I can in, in the powers that are bestowed upon me in my limited role as select woman, but, but happy to support. So again, just for the record, wanted to echo what Mr. Bunnell said and, and Ms. Odenak. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lefkowitz. Representative Steele?
I just want to make sure no one else from the public wanted to speak, because we have to make sure everyone does speak who wants to from the public before we go back to the membership, that's all. So I, I want to, before I talk, make sure someone else doesn't want from the public.
Okay. Hold on here. Let's just see if somebody might have their hand up. Because they're not used to the... I don't see that many left. I believe there are 39 of us here. There are 50 on the call and several of those are from either the administration or Fair TV. So I think we're done with public comment for now.
Yeah, I just wanted to address a couple of things. One, the reason this came at the last minute is, this really was introduced at the committee meetings two weeks ago. And, and I thought through this very carefully about how it should be worded and right up to today. So really, I didn't, I didn't send it because it wasn't ready. And probably would have sent it earlier, except I had to go to a wake this evening. It took all this time to put together, to be quite honest. That, that, that's why that happened. I, I guess I still kind of have a question on the, on the task force. When I look back and, and read everything from the, the task force, I still don't understand why the task force itself didn't make its own proclamation. It didn't do that, but I, what it did do, and I'm just reading, it says, "The town of Fairfield should make a formal proclamation, adopt a subsequent resolution that acknowledges the existence and impact of a combination of systems that disadvantaged DIPOC residents to access an opportunity in Fairfield and commits to addressing racial equity and justice in town governance and town operations." And I had read that before, but that, that's what we've done here. And so I, that very statement, because the task force itself didn't come out with, with its proclamation, but it says, "We should instead say this." And I felt, that's what this, this resolution does. It addresses everything you're all talking about. There's, there's nothing that you're saying that we're saying, you're wrong, we don't agree. So much so that we've, we've put it, we've put it in the resolution. Like, I feel we are addressing these issues you brought up. I mean, what, what more? We are, we're getting in front of it, we're confronting it, we're addressing it, we're, we're talking about it throughout the resolution. And I don't think anyone who reads the resolution would think that the town of Fairfield doesn't support efforts to combat racism. So you talk about a single issue, and there are a lot of issues, why can't we address multiple issues? But anyone who reads this, whether they're in the body, they're in public, they're outside, no one's going to read it and say, "That town of Fairfield didn't do enough to address racism." I think, in fact, quite the opposite. It's exactly what this does. It addresses racism and how we should be confronting it and how we should be a welcome, opening town, and that there are a number of public health crises that we have to address as well. And I think you take all those points together, that's what this does. So I'm sorry, it's unfortunate if you, if you can't agree with, with each of these components, but these components are, are, are bringing to life everything you've already said. So I'm going to stop.
Thank you, Representative Steele. Selectwoman Lefkowitz would like to respond to your comments, considering she was on the task force, so I will let her respond.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, I just wanted to clarify for Representative Steele, a couple of things. Making an actual proclamation was outside the purview of the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force. We were simply convened as a recommending body, so we really were not charged with the ability to, to, to make specific statements. We could only make recommendations. And since our recommendations were presented at the end of January, I think it presented an opportunity based on this idea of privileged pacing, where I think there is a strong belief that we don't have the privilege, that the, the non-white members of this community don't have, some of the members of this community don't have, can't, can't wait for us to acknowledge and validate the existence and the experience. But had the task force been enabled and empowered to, to act in that way and to make such a declaration, I'm certain that I speak for a majority of that body that we would have. So that's the first thing. And, and I, I think that no one is, I have not heard arguments against, but there's a lot of in, in, again, through you, Mr. Moderator, with, with the amendments proposed, there's a lot of talking around the issue of systemic racism. And what, what the amendments don't do is name the thing. And I think what is so important is the naming of the problem, of declaring systemic racism as, as a public health issue very specifically, because we can't actually begin to tackle and address the problem until we name it for what it is. And I think that the, the language presented as is, does that very thing. It names the problem specifically. So it, it's not that anyone's arguing with what's before us as an amendment, but rather it, it dilutes the point of the immediacy. And I think that's the point of acting tonight, because it doesn't supersede being able to take action at a later date, but rather name the thing tonight with the declaration as it is, and then go on to do the work, allow people time to digest what has been written and presented. And I think it was Mr. Lambert's point, to Representative Lambert's point, there's lots of opportunities for, for groups to convene to address the points and to tackle those issues. Thank you for allowing me to clarify.
Thank you, Selectwoman Lefkowitz. Representative Wolk and Pastille, are you going to say anything new that you haven't already said? Because I would like to take a vote on this amendment.
Yes, I'll be quick.
And, and we can, if you want to comment, because we're going to go, have to go back and vote on the original resolution if this does not pass. So go ahead, Jay, if you say you're going to be quick.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Jay Walk, District Five. I just have a couple of quick things. I'll make it really quick. Let's not forget, everybody, that this is not a legally binding resolution. It's a first step to make people in our state aware of what we're doing, just like I did with the GMO labeling sense of the body when, when Representative Steele was our moderator and supported it also. It, it, it's just the beginning, so I'll, I'll end it on that, but just, just quick, and I won't end it, that it, it, it's just, the, actually, our sense of the body went to the stage right before a vote on the GMO labeling bill, and then it went all the way to the Senate. So there's time, Representative Steele, that, that we can, you can add to this afterwards. It's just the beginning. It's, it's not cast in stone. Like I said, it's not legally binding. All right, thanks, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Representative Wolk. Representative Pastille?
Sharon Pastille, District Three. I just want to point out that this is actually, this is in fact, a single issue, and that is the point of the resolution. Um, my understanding, and I will stand corrected if I am wrong, but my understanding is that for Select Woman Kupchik was asked to make a proclamation. So um, you know, this is why we're acting on this, uh to bring this resolution before the body. And if these amendments were important enough and a big enough priority, then we would receive them sooner than eight thirty-five on the evening of the meeting. So this is why we should um I, I cannot support the the amendment and uh we need to move forward with the resolution as written, supporting the single issue of racism as a public health crisis. Thank you.
Representative Bastilli, Representative Zesma.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I'd like to just follow up my previous comments first by thanking uh our first selectwoman for convening this task force, the task force itself, and all those in the community who contributed to their work. I see you, I hear you. Um, I want to thank my caucus for their incredibly thoughtful and powerful comments tonight. And I want to thank again Representative Steele for the work he's done. I would very much, um, you know, I'm sorry that I cannot support the amendment. I do support the resolution and encourage my colleagues on both sides to do so. And I look forward to working with um leadership in the other caucus um on the very um items and issues that Mr. Steele does bring up. And I also want to say that, you know, had those all, had all those issues been covered by a task force, it would fit perfectly um with that work and and therefore would be a more appropriate resolution. Um, I also would call on our first selectwoman to um, you know, she is empowered to uh issue a proclamation. And um I will be speaking with her, as I said, again, next month, and I do encourage her to do all she can um to honor the recommendations of the task force that she convened. So my position is I will be voting no on the amendment, yes on the resolution, and I look forward to future bipartisan work uh with my colleagues on this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Zesma. Okay, uh, we're gonna do a roll call vote uh on the amendment. I, we're not gonna read it again because it's four minutes long, I guess. So I think everybody got a picture of it. You also should have gotten, I know I got it, the email copy of it. Um, so uh Betsy Brown, please.
Yes.
Melissa Longo?
Yes.
Marty Fury?
Yes.
Amy Ruggero?
Yes.
Karen McCormick?
Yes.
Cindy Perom?
No.
I'm sorry, Cindy?
No.
Jeff Steele?
Yes.
Alex Durrell?
Yes.
Jeff Galdenzy?
No.
Tom Lambert?
No.
Karen Pistilli?
No.
Laura Carson?
No.
Alice Kelly?
No.
No.
Betsy, did we lose you?
I, I lost audio with uh Alice Kelly, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a, I'm a no.
Thank you. Marcy Spolier?
No.
Liz Zesma?
No.
Will Diaz?
No.
Josh Garskov?
No.
Joe Seibert?
No.
Jay Walk?
No.
Barretts?
No.
Hannah Gale?
Yes.
Andrew Graceffa?
No.
Havy?
Lisa? I can't hear my name.
Lisa Havy.
I say no.
Thank you. Mark McDermott?
No. You missed John Keen. Where'd you get him?
I'm sorry. John Keen?
No.
Jill Vergara?
No.
Karen Whackerman?
No.
Hank Ferens?
Yes.
Amaya Kono?
Yes.
Christine Messina?
Yes.
Pete Tolman? Christine Brown?
No.
Drew Giorgiades?
No.
Margaret Horton?
No.
Ellie Cento?
Yes.
Hannah Starita?
Yes.
Peter Britton?
Yes.
Frank Patisse?
Yes.
Story Tolman?
Yes.
Seventeen in favor, twenty-two opposed.
Oh, the amendment fails. All right, so we're gonna go back to the the original item on the agenda and consider and act upon a sense of the body resolution regarding racism as a public health crisis. I'm gonna uh we already have a motion. I'll make another motion to approve. Representative Bastilli, seconded by anybody, Representative Carson. I will now open it up to comments from the body. Representative Whackerman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I just, uh, since Representative Steele's resolution did incorporate um the issue of uh racial inequality and injustice, uh injustice along with other things, I'd like to strongly encourage my colleagues on the other side of the aisle to support this resolution because it's a piece of what he was proposing. So I hope that we'll have a nice unanimous uh vote in favor of this. Thanks.
Thank you, Representative Whackerman. Any other comments from the body? I don't see any, any other comments. I'll open it to the public or anybody who has not spoken yet and may still be with us. Okay, so seeing no further cup, Representative, Representative Select Woman Lefkowitz.
Thank you. Again, uh Nancy Lefkowitz, Select Woman, uh, former co-chair of the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force and Fairfield resident. And I want to echo what Representative Whackerman just said. That if you're inclined to support even some of what and I, I think I'm speaking because I, I see unfortunately that this vote has now gone down party lines, which is really a shame um in terms of the amendment, not the amendment. And I would just encourage um those of you that voted for the amendment um to, to really not let perfect get in the way of good and that this is just a point. And that it does not supersede, again, what could be done and and how Representative Steele's um thoughtful comments and 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 language in that amendment, absolutely, that is work that should continue. But for tonight, for the sake of tonight, I just urge you standing in solidarity and support of the one in five residents who live here who identify as non-white to support this specific declaration because it will do so much in validating the lived experience of those residents. And um so again, it's not perfect, perhaps, in your per, in your um, in your uh mind's eye, but I hope that you at least think it's good and that it's a start and that we can begin working together with a declaration that racism, systemic racism is a public health issue that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Select Woman Lefkowitz. Okay. No other public comment. Any last comments by the body? Anybody from the body? Okay, we'll take it to a roll call vote. Um. Betsy, you're up.
Ed Bateson?
Just as a reminder, it's a two-thirds vote. We have thirty-nine. So how many do we need this to pass? Twenty?
Six.
Six. Thank you.
Ed Bateson?
No.
Melissa Longo?
No.
Marty Fury?
No.
Amy Ruggero?
No.
Karen McCormick?
No.
Cindy Perom?
Yes.
Jeff Steele?
No.
Alex Durrell?
No.
Jeff Galdenzy?
Yes.
Tom Lambert?
Yes.
Karen Pistilli?
Yes.
Laura Carson?
Yes.
Alice Kelly?
Yes.
Marcy Spolier?
Yes.
Liz Zesma?
Yes.
Will Diaz?
Yes.
Josh Garskov?
Yes.
Joe Seibert?
Yes.
Jay Walk?
Yes.
Steve Barretts?
Yes.
Hannah Gale?
Yeah.
Andrew Graceffa?
Yes.
Lisa Havy?
Yes.
John Keen?
Yeah.
Mark McDermott? Jill Vergara?
Yes.
Karen Whackerman?
Yes.
Hank Ferens?
No.
Amaya Kono?
No.
Christine Messina?
No.
Pete Tolman? Christine Brown?
Yes.
Drew Giorgiades?
Yes.
Margaret Horton?
Yes.
Cento?
No.
Hannah Starita?
No.
Peter Britton?
No.
Pete Patisse?
No.
Ari Tolman?
No.
Twenty-two in favor, seventeen opposed.
That motion fails. Thank you. Uh, item number nine, to hear a report from the redistricting committee. Um Chairman Schwartz is not here, I believe. Uh, Representative Whackerman, you're gonna give us an update?
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. Karen Whackerman is not the chairman. We have no chairman. The next high-ranking officer is the secretary. That's myself.
Okay, well, thank you very much for letting me know that. So Secretary Ayakano?
Um, we are with, per our rules, we're supposed to submit our reports in writing. There is no written report, but just to brief the um committee, we are still working on the ordinance. We have paused while um charter reform was straightening out what they wanted to recommend.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, can I comment on that?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Schwartz has uh resigned from the committee and um Representative uh Spolier has joined the committee as of this evening. Um, and I just, I personally wanted to thank Representative Schwartz. He did a great job leading us as far as we did get. And um I imagine Representatives Ayakano and McCormick would join me in in that sentiment. Um, and I just wanted to point out that we are having a meeting tomorrow night, so that's it.
What time is the meeting tomorrow night?
Uh, seven PM in Old Town Hall Conference Room.
Will it be on Fair TV?
Uh, it won't be live on Fair TV, but they're taping it. It is on WebEx. People can dial in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Representative Zesma, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Liz Zesma, District Four. I just want for public transparency and understanding, uh for them to understand that redistricting is driven by the current charter, not the one we think we might end up with. I was assured privately, actually, that that one would not impact the other. It's a complete conflict and it is not in keeping with the charge which every member of the SLMC voted for. So, but with respect to what's happening on charter revision, it doesn't appear as if they have uh a consensus vote for nine districts, which is what has been, you know, preferred. And therefore, even though I am not allowing it to be the um benchmark for what we do on redistricting, that is not in keeping with the charter, there is absolutely no reason not to proceed and to get this job done. We do have time to get it to the state. There are no more. Um, there is no barrier. Uh, there is no, that issue that that cannot be um accomplished or uh negotiated within that committee. And I call on the members of the committee to reconvene and to get the job done. And I want to congratulate Marcy Spolier for becoming the newest member. And um I would encourage the public to uh attend tomorrow night's meeting remotely, and there will be public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Zesma. Sorry, Representative Bastilli, I skipped over you.
Uh, that's okay. Um, Mr. Moderator, uh through you to Ms. Whackerman. I, could you explain how the um, I don't, I don't understand why the I thought that the charge of the redistricting committee is completely separate and sooner than um anything that might be happening with charter revision. Can you explain the rep, the relationship between the two? Or the separation between the two?
Um, yeah, so, yeah, charter revision is a totally separate, it just happens to be happening at the same time. We are charged had a deadline of February um to get uh uh with the redistricting done. Then we realized um that there were some procedural things we could do to give ourselves some more time. And the deadline, we, the final deadline is next spring to get it done. But what we were trying to do is have the districts in place in time for this year's um elections to be uh governed by that, those districts, so that hopefully people don't have to learn again next year what their districts are. Um, and to do that, we would have to um have voted as a RTM on an ordinance with the districts by May eleventh. So that's what I'm personally hoping. If we can meet tomorrow, we might be able to get this done, but I don't know if that can happen.
Thank, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, you're muted.
I apologize. Anybody else have questions or comments? I apologize. Anybody else have questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move item number ten, to consider and act upon any other matters presented to said meeting and which may be properly acted upon under the rules of representative town meeting. Do we have anything there? I am going to assume no. All right. Want to thank everybody for attending tonight. We have our budget meeting next Monday night at eight. We have a special meeting before that to hear appeals. Starting at, what time, Betsy? Six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Darrell.
Representative Havy, seconded by Darrell.
Yes.
Good night. See you all next week.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.